Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dean Vallone. I'm the President of the Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners. I'm calling this regular meeting of October 24, 2022 to order. Proof of publication is available for this meeting. We begin our meetings with a prayer and pledge of allegiance. We'll pray. We pray this day to give thanks for all the many blessings bestowed upon our township, watch over us who are entrusted with the administration of this township. Create in us the earnest desire to serve faithfully and permit us to experience the joys of noble service completed for our residents. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who serve. Help us to use every willing service and every effort put forth for good government. Heavenly Father, we ask your guidance to help us as commissioners to make the right decisions. We ask that you aid our staff as they perform the daily tasks of running our township, and we request that you be by our first responders as they protect our residents and see that they return home safe at the end of each day. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Again, welcome both to those that are here in person with us this evening and those who are following us and joining us via the live stream on YouTube. Again, I'm Dean Vallone. I'm the President of the Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners, and this evening I'm joined by, for the far left, Commissioner Karen, Vice President Black, and Commissioner Nagy. Let the record show that Commissioner Kutz is absent, and he did notify me recently of his absence for now, and he may join us later. Commissioners, in our packets this week, we received our meeting minutes from our meeting of October 10, 2022. Hopefully, everybody's had a good chance to go over them, and I'd be looking for some -- or be looking for a motion if there's no questions or any comments or changes that need to be made on the minutes at this time.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of October 10, 2022.
Second.
And I have a second. A motion came from Commissioner Nagy, and the second is from Vice President Black. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments? I call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Next, we have a presentation from John Menito from the West Shore Recreation Commission. John, it's always great to have you come with us. You know the drill. Come on up to the podium and share with us what's going on at the REC Association. For those that don't know, we partner here at Lower Allen Township proudly with the West Shore Recreation Association.
Yes, I want to thank you very much for having me on the agenda. It's always a privilege to be here tonight and go over a couple of minutes about the West Shore REC. Now, the West Shore REC now has been, it's hard to believe, it's going on 55 years for the West Shore REC, and the West Shore REC consists of six municipality, Fairview Township, Goldsboro, Lemoine, Lewisberry, Lower Allen, and New Cumberland. And for your information, we'll know tomorrow night if Newbury Township is going to join the West Shore REC. They went, they were in for a long time, then they went out about eight years ago. So we've been in negotiation with them for the last month or so, and supposedly it's supposed to be on the agenda tomorrow night, and hopefully they make a vote, and I hope it's a positive vote. I'll be there to see what's going on and all that, so I just wanted to give you an FII on that. As far as the West Shore REC now, it's, I've been involved now going on over 30 years, and it's always a privilege and an honor to work with an association with the West Shore REC for all the programs that they do for all ages throughout the years. And in 2021, we had a slow start because of the COVID craziness and what have you, but as the year went on, we showed a pretty good positive improvement. 2022 now has been a very solid year, and we're still, the registration has gone up pretty good, and we want to thank Lower Allen Township for letting us use your facilities. And your per capita is still at $3. Your population has increased almost about 12% from 2010 to 2020, so that's a big plus for Lower Allen. It just shows you that you're doing something right here in this township, and it's, you're catching up the Fairview Township, by the way, so, and I'm Fairview Township, but hey, if you pass us, that's great news, and Fairview Township is also moving in the right direction also. But again, it's an honor, it's your, it's the loyalty and commitment and your support from Lower Allen Township that keeps the machine running with the West Shore REC. And we have a staff of only four people, and God bless them, they come out with these programs twice a year, the flyers come out, and they do a tremendous job as far as putting all the programs together, getting volunteers, getting instructors, and it's very difficult year to get instructors. We had to increase our pay for them because that's part of the business anymore, prices are going up, so we had to make adjustments, and we came out pretty good as far as getting instructors, which is great news, and hopefully we continue that moving forward for 2023. But for 2022, we did show a good improvement of the, of the, of the use of all the facilities that you guys provide and also the other townships and boroughs, and it's just, I just can't say enough thank you for you, for the council commissioners and what have you here to really support the West Shore REC. And I have to thank Mr. Ed Black and also Mary Ann McCoy, who comes to the meeting on a regular basis, and they give us input on the Lower Allen Township, so we know what's going on, and believe me, Mr. Black, I've always looked up to him for, excuse me, for many years, and I appreciate that, what he brings to the table, and also with Mary Beth. So you have two good representatives from Lower Allen Township that comes to our meetings and gives us all the details of what's going on, and my hat's off to you, Ed, and also to Mary Ann.
Thank you, John.
That, I appreciate you guys being there all the time and letting us know what's going on. Other than that, that's about all I have, and again, it's, I know I repeat myself of saying thank you, I just can't say, and we, not I, but we, can I thank you enough for supporting the West Shore REC, and because again, with the programs and what have you, it's just an honor to be here in front of you, and it's hard to believe we're almost at the end of October, and 2023 is right around the corner, and we just counter blessings that you guys are doing something right. The West Shore REC is doing something right, and we're moving forward, and hope we can continue this throughout the end of this year and many years to come. So if you have any questions or anything, I'll try and answer them. If not, shoot them over to Mr. Black, and I know he'll come to me with them, and we'll follow up on that. But I just wanted to let you know about the Newbury, and we'll see what happens there. Hopefully, they may, you know, it's hard to say what they're going to do, but if they do, then hopefully the per capita may go down, 2024. We'll just have to wait and see what their, what their thoughts are, and we'll go from there. But I just want to give you an FII on that, so you know what's going on with the West Shore REC and all that.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I just want to thank John for his long-term service on the West Shore Recreation Commission. Thank you, John.
Well, thank you, Ed. I always, like I said earlier, I look up to you, and I, whatever you say, I, you know, I take it with, with a lot of thought, and you're mostly right on target every time you do, anytime you say something, it's really an improvement for me to listen to you, because you've been around a long time, too, and it's great that you're a partner of the West Shore REC.
I'm only 18, John.
Very good. All right, is that it?
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Anything?
I would just, I would just like to say, John, thank you for coming here and sharing again with us, and so appreciative, because everything that's, could be right in government and good government is really, the example is in this relationship, one of those examples in the partnership.
That's.
I know that we've had some discussions over the last several years about, you know, helping out back and forth and things like that, and yes, we've got a major asset here having Vice President Black participating, and all of his experience and expertise is just, it makes the partnership even better.
Exactly.
And so thank you so much for all the work.
Appreciate it.
Obviously, things are going well over there.
Yep.
Considering the personnel issue, and we just look forward to continuing and strengthening our relationship.
That's exactly right, and I appreciate the kind words, and again, thank you very much, and, and have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you again.
Next is audience participation regarding our agenda, and that is if you're here this evening to participate in any item that's on our agenda, now's the time to let us know, and at that time, when we get to that item, we'll have you come up to the podium, participate. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to participate in any item on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. Any commissioner, staff member, or anyone in attendance who would like to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion can request so now. Is there a request to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion?
If no requests, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Commissioner, and I do apologize, I was, I am going to remove one item.
Okay.
And that is the check register, it'd be 6B. And is there any other requests to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion? Okay. Mr. Solicitor, is it just in line and appropriate that I would just take up B separately now?
Mr. Nagy will withdraw his motion.
Yeah. Withdraw the motion, and then, do you want me to just make a new motion for A, C, and D?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda for letters A, C, and D, and withhold the check register for October 21st.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy.
Second.
I have a second from Vice President Black. Is there any questions, comments, or any discussion on the consent agenda regarding A, C, and D? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. And I would just apologize in advance if I am wasting time here, but the only reason I took this off is that the check register amount is very large in comparison to most or any check register that I've ever seen come through. Going through the check register itself, I'm identifying about a $3 million transfer into, into or out of, I believe is how I interpreted that, for an investment account. And Director Grover, all I'd like you to do for the benefit of all of us is to just explain that difference this month.
Yes, it, we have several accounts in the general fund. We have our regular checking, but also this particular account is an account where you maximize your return on your cash through things like CDs, commercial paper perhaps, and where it's going, they have a very large inventory of things to pull from that are safe and have the highest rate that's available to us. So that's all it is. It's going from one cash account to another, it's not actually an expenditure. Eventually, we will draw that back when we need it.
Yeah, okay, and I did gather that, so it's just, it just was transferred in, that's why the checking account is buffed up, so to speak, right now, and then it's going to be going out into, I'm going to call it that opportunity, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. And does that type of thing happen often? We just miss it on the, on the every-two-week cycle?
No, it doesn't happen often.
Okay.
There's about a million and a half over there now, this will beef it up. The rates, the short-term rates have gone up with all the action of the feds, the yield curves inverted, so the opportunity's there for now, for short-term investment to really improve our return.
Okay. Great, thank you for the explanation. Commissioners, I'm satisfied with the answer to my question, and if you don't have any questions or any further comments on the check register, I would be seeking a motion to approve the check register and the amount of $3,257,443.55.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy.
Second.
I have a second from Vice President Black. Is there any discussion, comments, or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Thank you, Director and Commissioners, for your patience, so I got that clarified. Under President, this evening, I'll just say that we have a series of resolutions regarding personnel appointments and hiring that have been discussed and contemplated prior to this meeting at various points over the last several months, and staff's been working on different things. So it seems unusual, it's because we have a lot going on with personnel right now. So first, I'd be looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R31, that's the appointment of Helen R. Grundon as Administrative Assistant slash Event Coordinator for the Public Works Department, and that would be effective October 25, 2022.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy.
A second.
I have a second from Commissioner Karen. Are there any questions, comments, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Next, Commissioners, I'd be looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R32, and this is the appointment of Nathaniel C. Sterling as Administrative Secretary for the Administration Department, effective October 25, 2022.
So moved.
I have a motion from Vice President Black.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Nagy. Any questions, comments, or any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Next, I'd be seeking a motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R33, this is the hiring of Barbara P. Arnold as Environmental Coordinator for the Public Works Department, effective November 2, 2022.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy. I have a, do you want to make a second, Vice President Black?
That's fine.
I have a second from Vice President Black. Any questions, comments?
I have a question for Becky. Becky, exactly what does that title mean?
Well, instead of doing the slash MS4 slash recycling coordinator slash position, we grouped it into that role, and that's the position that we discussed at the last two meetings regarding the MS4 outreach and that outreach for the recycling program, grant coordination, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments, or any more discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Next, I'd be seeking a motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R34, and this is the appointment of Anthony B. Dir as an Emergency Medical Technician II for the Emergency Medical Services Department, effective October 25, 2022.
So moved.
I have a motion from Vice President Black.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Nagy. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Next, I'd be seeking a motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R35, electing a township secretary, appointing an assistant secretary, and establishing compensation.
So moved.
I have a motion from Vice President Black.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Nagy, and I believe there's a question coming.
Oh, I just had a question. It looked like in the resolution we had that it was to be adopted as of November 14th. I just was curious as to if that was to be October 24th, or if it's intended to be adopted at a later date.
Yeah, actually, that is supposed to take effect on Helen's last day as the Administrative Secretary down here when she moves up to take her new role. She will, she will continue acting as Township Secretary until then.
Does that satisfy your question, Commissioner, or is there more?
I think the date, it should be amended to be, to, that the resolution will take effect today, but the position itself, the line above that indicates that it won't be effective until the 15th. So if you want to, let's see, Commissioner Black, Commissioner Nagy, if you want to amend your motions to adopt the resolution as amended, then that's, we'll, we'll change the date to be today's date.
So.
I'll withdraw my second.
Commissioner Nagy has withdrawn his second on the motion. Commissioner Black, would you like to amend the motion?
Yeah, well, just a point of clarification, Tom, are you saying it would be effective October 24, today?
No, the resolution is effective today, or, you know, when it's adopted.
Correct.
But the position itself will be effective on November the 15th. So Helen will continue, we're adopting it today, but she will continue in the position of Township Secretary until the 15th, at which point I will take over then as Township Secretary.
I think we had a meeting for November 14th, so I wonder if it was meant to be.
Yeah, probably.
So we're adding to the motion 2022-R35-35, electing Township Secretary, appointing an assistant secretary, and establishing compensation, effective November 15, 2022?
Yes, and adopt it into a resolution on this date, on October 24th.
Correct.
So I, that's my motion. The amendment is as of effective November 15, 2022. And so I have a motion from Vice President Black.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Nagy. Now, is there any other questions, comments, or any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. And just a point of clarification on that, Tom. We'll just then make that appointment as well on that date for the, for the assistant?
It's already, you just did it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you just appointed Aaron to take over as Assistant Township Manager as of the same date.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
Chair has her job.
That's right. I'm used to saying that, yes, Assistant Township Secretary.
So that covers the, those resolutions. Now, I have one more resolution, a motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R36. This is for the 2022 records disposition for the, for public safety, and that resolution also came to us over the weekend.
For public information, that means that these records will be destroyed, is that correct? Yeah, okay. I would make a motion for Resolution 2022-R-36.
I would second that with a question, just to confirm with Solicitor Minor that he's comfortable that these comply with. comfortable that these comply with the appropriate law.
Yes, they follow the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission guidelines.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. President. Just out of curiosity, considering the age of some of these, I assume these are paper documents? Do we store them here or undisclosed?
Yes, they are. They're, they're stored in, in a facility on the second floor. There's a PD and an EMS records area. And we're kind of merging the, we're, we're actually splitting up the PD records to make the other space available. So the captains went through all of those records and decided, based upon the Museum Commission requirements, they were no longer necessary. And so that was a request for the destruction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Okay. Next on our agenda, any business pertinent to the township. We limit our discussions to around 15 minutes per person. Is there anyone joining us this evening that would like to bring up any business pertinent to Lower Allen Township? If so, have you come up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to finance. Director Grove's gonna lead us through the other funds budgets, street light sanitation and highway aid.
Yes, there were two updates since Thursday's packet. You should have those in front of you. It's just two pages. There are two funds that we pulled out for other directors to present. And then when they're done, I'll wrap up with the other smaller funds. I thought we would start with highway aid. Highway aid has a set pattern where state aid comes in. And it's, it's pretty much constant every year, that amount. And we save the amount in one year, build up the fund balance, and then we do resurfacing the next, which pulls that fund balance down. So this year, you're going to see a big deficit in the highway aid fund, which is normal and, and is a routine. Next year, if this process continues, you'll see a large surplus and on and on. So with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Davis. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Director.
Thank you.
For the promotion.
Promotion.
Not at this time. Thank you. Thank you, Director Grove.
Well, okay.
Thank you. I am going to talk about some increases in expenditures in highway aid. I'm not going to go over any decreases or amounts that stay the same. But if you have questions, please feel free to ask. I'm going to discuss one, one large increase. That would be under our traffic signal repairs. So that's under the Signals and Signs 433, 377, or sorry, 433, 651, excuse me. It's a $205,000 expenditure. This is to replace poles, cabinet, wiring, and pavement markings at the traffic light signal at Center and Louther Road, excuse me, Carlisle and Louther or Carlisle and Center. You could look at it at both intersections. So this is probably our second oldest traffic signal in the township. The poles are direct burial. They're not bolted into the ground. They're actually leaning onto PP and L wires at this moment. We do need to fix this signal, and that expenditure would cover the cost to replace the poles, cabinets, and wiring, as I described. So as you go down Carlisle Road, there's a new small 555 mark on the corner. That's where this signal is located, if you're not familiar with the location, Commissioners. The next expenditure increase in this, this fund would be a $20,000 expenditure for 438313. That's engineering and professional services. That's a $20,000 expenditure to engage with McMahon, our traffic engineer, to have our, a road rating system developed by Carnegie Mellon to rate the township roads. They would use a system that is GIS database developed. It is, has been used in many municipalities in the area. And they would drive our whole township with this system and, and rate the roads without subjectivity within two days. So it would give us a good foundation for planning appropriately when we look to do maintenance, especially maintenance, and then future paving projects. It would be a good tool for us to have and to use for planning purposes. So that is the $20,000 increase in that line item. Then we have the last line item. That's the largest increase. That would be the $1.4 million increase for paving under contracted services. This would be bitted out work. We did only pave one road this year. That was Beaver Road. We did budget $700,000 to do that, to do paving this year, but we did not accomplish that mainly because the roads that we were going to pave were in the area where the Pennsylvania American Water Company has done lateral replacements and repairs. So their work is just completing. So paving would not have been able to be conducted as scheduled. So those projects will be moved forward into 2023. That $1.4 million would cover about four miles of, of paving majority in the Allendale Development. And that would also be handicap ramp replacement with the curb or cheek walls budgeted in that expenditure.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions right now on the, the highway aid?
I just had a quick question about the liquid fuels tax, just in terms of the decrease from 2022 to 2023. It looks like it was on the rise. And I'm just curious, what was the cause of the decrease?
It actually, this comes from the state, from the liquid fuels they collected to fuel pumps. And over the last six years, it actually has been decreasing an average of about $5,000 to $7,000 a year. And I think it will decrease. I think it has to do in part with electric cars, is what I'm told anyway. So if it continues in the same structure that it has at being collected only from gasoline sales, it probably will decrease.
Okay, thank you.
Do you anticipate how they would replace that?
I don't, no, I don't, I can't venture a guess at this point. I really don't know.
So there's been some discussion of, of applying an additional fee onto electric cars to, to make up for the loss in gas tax. But, you know, that's going to be a political hot potato.
Understood. And my, my concern really isn't with that and how they're going to do that. And yes, I agree, that's going to be something we would sit on the sidelines and, I think, watch for a while. My concern is that seeing it decrease, and we're already, I mean, since I've been involved, you know, when the street paving projects come up, unfortunately, we can never get to all of them because of our funds being limited. And we basically take the liquid fuels funds and we do the projects. And I, I guess I'm even a little more fearful now that with inflation and, and the possibility that this might go way down without any help for quite a while, especially if it becomes a political issue, that even less would be done when those cycles come back around. And I'm, you know, I get calls from time to time, and people, you know, they're paying attention and, and they're hearing us say, you know, township's in decent shape. You know, we're not in bad shape. We're not in, you know, excellent shape. We're, you know, we can pave the streets gold. But I think people, there's an expectation that if they're at the bottom of the list in their neighborhoods, that they may never get taken care of because, you know, we can never get enough projects going. And so I think we're not going to solve this tonight, but I think it's something that the board has to start maybe looking at down the road here. And, and staff maybe can give us some guidance as to how do we look at some of these areas of the township that might need some help that we don't get to because we run out of, we run out of funds? Because we're just counting purely on the liquid fuels funds. So I'm not really asking for any explanation tonight, and I didn't want to blindside anybody. I just wanted to make that as a comment, that I want to stay vigilant about it moving forward because now here, we may have a temporary significant decrease in this. Who knows? Moving forward without any near term recovery in it, which might make matters even worse. And we are in pretty good shape in the township. And I think that maybe we should look at if it's possible to prioritize some projects that, by adding into it from making investments on our own without liquid fuels. Maybe that's something we can consider down the road moving forward. I'm not, certainly not suggesting overhauling our budget, doing anything right now for next year, but I just want to bring that to light.
President Blom, just so the board knows, staff has already started that process. We met last week with an engineer, traffic engineer. That's where the $20,000 for the, for the road assessment came from, from that meeting. That's the first step in prioritizing. And then in part, part of the discussion was how to finance a lot of paving at once without sacrificing, let's say, the next 10 years. Because debt service would, would probably eat up most of what we get in liquid fuels if we were to finance all the paving at once. So, so we're trying to, first, again, first step is to prioritize what needs done. We talked about some specific neighborhoods that need attention, immediate attention, which when I say immediate, I mean, within the next five or so years. But that, that process has started.
Thank you very much. That's, that's really great news. And I appreciate you listening. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners, on, on these funds?
Next, then, I'd like to move to fire with Director Hall. Fire did extremely well, putting their, their budgets together. Let me pull up a real brief PowerPoint that'll accentuate some of those things. This, this involves Lisburn and LA Fire. And all we're going to really talk about this evening is the significant budget changes that came into play. So let's look at the 411 Fund. It's the 411 and 416 Funds. And 411, Lower Allen Volunteer Fire Company. Their overall 411 operational budget request for 2023 is under that 2.5%. The board will remember that that's the, the target that they put, not to exceed the 2.5. 22 total line items in their budget experienced 0% increases and six total line items experienced decreases. The, the biggest one here, and Director Grove actually had, had added this in, he can, there's questions, he can explain. But the yearly contribution increased by $8,590 for the VSAP pension from 2022. That's a 97.6% increase. 2022, it was $8,802. 2023 is $17,387 higher. So again, you know, I would, if there's any questions, I would have him comment on those. If not, the 411 220, general expenditure reduced by 36.5%. It went from $443, $470 to $91,170. Primarily, this was caused by a reduction in the college live-in program. What we have, and that's, what we have done there is we've carried extra money just in case we got more live-ins. So it's, it's essentially been an overfunded area for a number of years. It's not to say that we are not seeking more candidates. We certainly are. We have one currently that's looking at coming aboard. I think it's done a really great job at filling that. But we had funded for six live-ins and we actually, college live-ins, and we only actually have four dormitory settings upstairs. So we reduced it to, for that four. Can add funds again in the future years if recruiting is positively with ongoing efforts. But it didn't make any sense to just let that money sit there, not spent from year to year to year when it can be used for other things. So that's still a very positive program. We still plan on moving that forward.
Director Hall?
Yes.
Are we planning to cap it at four if, say, we were to get an extra?
We have other facilities, actually. Station two has, has bunk rooms. They're not the same kind of study conducent study that these upstairs do. We actually have some additional bunk rooms upstairs. So we could move it up, but right now we have two active. If we bring one more on, next.
Still an empty.
Next college year, we'd have three.
Okay.
So there, there's capacity there. And so rather than just let money sit, you know, the decision was made, let's, let's take it down to the four, where we actually have four dorm rooms. And then we'll keep the, the active recruiting efforts moving forward.
Thank you.
But we can, we have some buffer expansion areas if we had to. So also, then, the 720 was reduced, let's go to minor equipment. I bumped that, didn't I? Yeah, okay. The minor equipment was reduced 77.6%. Board will recall that last year, they did LED, or this year they did LED lighting replacement. That project was completed, so that brought that down pretty substantially. In the, in the 720 area, furniture, again, the, the gear lockers and locking boxes are being completed this year. So that was reduced to 0%. There's, there's no anticipation of any furniture in the 720 line in 2023. The big items, and you've seen this in all of the budgets, is in 730, machines, machinery, equipment, and vehicles. The radio replacement expense for Fire, LA Fire, is pretty significant. It's $452,060 for all vehicle mobile radios, portable radios, and base stations at Station One and Station Two. Also includes that $36,500 capital expense for the CAT to CAT interface. That's been an elusive project because the county actually has had some issues pulling together the CAT hexagon. So that's, we kept this in there in case we can work that out with them. But otherwise, it, it may not be spent. But it's still included in the budget, just in case. Hopefully, they can get that together. So that's, that's essentially the, the LA, the Lower Allen Fire Company. Under Lisburn, 416, significant changes. Where overall, the 416 budget for '22, again, is under that same 2.5 growth direction. Under 416 to 260, minor equipment that increased 84.4% to include some, some pretty needed projects. Lisburn's plan on doing, one is the reorganization and mounting of equipment on Engine 24 for $4,400, electric chainsaw 300, the clapboard Siamese for the mini pumper of $1,000, and the misting attachment for the PPV fan at 600. So that, that, that's what caused that significant rise. And you'll see in various line items, you know, one year it'll go up if you're funding some special project, and then the next year it'll go down. And that's the case here as well. So under audit actuarial, this was reduced to zero because there's a tri-annual audit that takes place. So you'll see every third year, it will go up, and the other two years, it will be down when the, when the audit's not being funded. So, and that's the case for 2023. The audit's been complete, so it will not be until 2024, until you see another, or 2025, so you see another factor here. For 416, seven, or 373, maintenance and repair of the building. That was 0% change. It remained at $4,800 for '22 and '23. And again, this, this, this capital line, 730, is radio replacement expense at $2,4800 for all vehicle mobile radios and portable radios. And we're, we're at the same place we were when I talked about the public safety budgets. I know that there is a, a meeting coming up this week. We were advised for the ARPA funding. So we're going to sit and see what the county's going to do with ARPA on Wednesday. We're having a Commissioners' hearing on that. So we'll, we're, we're waiting with bated breath in hopes of that being positive on our behalf. But in addition to that, the county is still looking at maybe a purchase in 2023, but there is a possibility it might get, the radio purchase might get pushed to 2024. And we've had some discussions about that, and the money would, we just move it because it's capital money. So it's sitting there kind of, you know, waiting for us to spend, I guess. So we're not quite sure where, when that's going to happen. It's going to be dependent upon tower construction and some other things that are infrastructure to have to take place first before they actually pull the switch to make the change. So, and that, that basically is pretty minimal, but that's, that's the end. Any questions at all?
Are you saying that the, the furring are, are pushing it out of, is it the commitment from the county?
They don't know yet.
Okay. The commitment or the, the actual implementation?
The target is 2023. That's what we've been hearing all along. But there is a possibility they will not have some of the tower work and some of the other things done in 2023, which will then make it, move it into the 2024 for the, for the changeover. So, so we're, once again, we are waiting to see where they are with logistics of that, that project. project.
Yeah, got it.
To tag onto that, so from a financial perspective, if it defers to 2024, Director Grove, would we purchase the radios still in 2023? Or, because right now, a lot of these budgets hinge on that very large capital expenditure of all these radios. If we don't buy them, is there something else that we should have been purchasing this year with that money?
No, no, I think the radios are coming. We just don't know the exact year. And we're going to need that money when they get here. So if we don't spend it next year, the money will just carry forward to '24, and we'll need it then.
Okay.
Right. And to clarify, our budget, as we talked about this, is already paying for these radios, but the possibility of getting half or some or most or all perhaps, all of it would just wind up being the windfall on it. That's the part that I'm anticipating, scaring me a little bit because, you know, promises depreciate.
And that could change all of these numbers because these numbers are dependent upon us getting no funds. So if you see us getting funds, it will offset those dollars.
Yeah.
And instead of $500,000, you may come in at $250,000 or less, you know, whatever the equation is going to be of revenue, grant money versus actual expenditure out of capital money.
Right. So I mean, either way, when the radios are ready to be purchased, we have it budgeted. That shouldn't be a concern because we need the radios. I'm talking purely on the financial side, not worrying about paying for them, but making sure that the county fulfills their commitment to us.
And we want to purchase when we are going to receive them, put them in place, so the warranty attaches at that point. You don't want to buy them ahead of time, and then you basically have a brick sitting in a room somewhere.
Sure.
You know, and the warranty now is moving forward, and you're not using them.
Right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the remaining somewhat very small funds. Streetlight, we will not need to change the assessment next year, although the cost of electric is going up. The streetlight fund has an interesting past and an interesting future. In the past, our energy costs are hard to predict, and the fund balance had built up here at one point. So in 2018, we reduced the assessment temporarily to spend down the fund balance, knowing that we would increase it again, which we did, I'm sorry, it was 2012, we reduced it, increased it again in 2019, back to where it was. So it's actually where it was like years ago. Going forward, though, we have the solar panels going in. Of course, there's capital cost with that, but that will affect the cost of electricity, no doubt, positively. So when we know the effect of that, we'll have to factor that in here. So I guess it's more optimistic looking forward than, you know, than just the status In addition to the FIRE operating fund, there is a FIRE capital fund. The handout I had includes a repayment for the Quint that was done a few years ago. That was expected and was planned for. The FIRE capital funds equipment from a schedule that runs through 2030. And the tax adjustment that was done effective 2018 is sufficient, as long as those prices hold, to get us through 2030, although we will need a bond increase or some type of borrowing in 2026. But for the moment, there's really not much to talk about in FIRE capital. Sanitation fund is completely dependent upon the charges we pay to the waste taller, which is set by a competitive bid, which ends at the end of 2023. And there is a cost increase going to them. So the quarterly fee will increase from $76.10 to $79.35. In addition, under the expenditure side, in sanitation, we are paying for half of the environmental resource hiring that we did tonight out of this line. Really, there's not much to talk about in debt service or capital improvement fund. We have no additional debt planned for 2023, so the debt service just continues on with what it has. And there's nothing at all planned at this moment for capital improvement fund.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Commissioners, any questions on the other budgets for the township that the directors went through? Give it a couple of seconds here.
This is just a quick question on the solar power for the street lighting that you brought up. Can you just touch on, like, is that on just some of the streetlights throughout the township? Or how was that determined? Just out of curiosity.
The solar panels, of course, generate electric that would go into the electric grid, which will be deducted from what we pay our electric provider, basically.
But they're not on individual streetlights, you're saying?
No, streetlights are not metered. So we pay a rate that's set by PPNL for them.
Okay.
It's so much per streetlight, I believe.
And we'll look at the two solar installations here and on the public works. All that energy goes back to the grid. We get our accounts credited, so that's how we're saving money on that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Karen, also, if you ever wanted to, I'm sure that the Director Grove or the manager could go over that solar program that we all went through before you came onboard.
I wonder why nobody else had questions.
It was quite a lengthy process, and you'll find that over the course of the life of that, what will be that project, the savings significant.
Oh, yeah. I was excited to hear that. Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Moving on to the township manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first item on there has to do with our Chapter 147, noise control. And this was generated by the discussion at your last regular meeting concerning fireworks. Remember, the Act 74 allowed the township to set the hours of, you know, when fireworks could be used. And Commissioner Kritz, I believe, suggested that we take a look at the entire chapter and take a look at the noise at the times when other types of noises are allowed. So the reason I put this on the agenda tonight was to see if the board had some direction on how you want to approach that. You know, do you want a commissioner to take a look at it? Do you want a couple to get together and do it? Do you want staff to go through it, make recommendations? Again, the current times, I believe, for most noisy activities in the township is prohibited from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And the fireworks ordinance, if you were to add that and change it as Act 74 would allow you to, would be restricted from 10:00 AM to, remind me, what's the morning time?
It's PM to AM.
It's 10:00 PM to, I don't recall the time.
10:00 PM to 10:00 AM.
10, okay, so 12-hour period. From 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM, that's when fireworks could be restricted. So the thought was, well, let's take a look at the other noises, too, and see if we want to change the time on that.
Right. Commissioners, any initial questions before I share my questions and concerns? Anything? Just as a recap, this is all coming from, as I guess we'll call it, the negative consequence of the law that was passed on fireworks quite a while ago, the state passed. These are kind of unintended consequences that are now made them take another pass through it, through various lobbying, I think is how that came about. And then they gave us, I guess, an updated or amended version of the law, which gave a few things, and I don't think it would be to anybody's satisfaction that where the complaints really were. So, but it does give us some things that we can do. And then it was brought up at our last meeting to maybe take the broader approach and making any changes, perhaps with time and stuff, a little bit more uniform to the regular noise ordinance. And that was my understanding. So commissioners, I mean, what the manager obviously wants is to just get some direction. My initial thought is to ask staff to take their time with it and try to pull all of that information from the broader noise ordinance together, and then come up with something, perhaps, in the next couple of months for us. You know, 4th of July will be our next big holiday, so we're not under a time scope, I don't think.
New Year's Eve.
Yeah, I don't experience fireworks much on New Year's Eve, but even there, the way the law read or amendment is, New Year's Eve is excluded from making any additional requirements on time anyway, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I think if we're going to do it right, perhaps we just do it in that broader sense with the noise ordinance and have staff just come up with some ideas for us, unless any commissioners would like to be directly involved with taking a look at it.
President Black, I think that that sounds like a great idea because, for me in particular, it'd be helpful to know, you know, 11 to 7 is a timeframe where it'd be interesting to know which of these areas, if we've in the past, received complaints, or which ones seem more problematic, or if there's, you know, certain areas that are more, I guess, more sensitive to the public. Because 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM is obviously a much longer time period than 11 to 7. So when we're thinking about it as a bigger picture, I think it would be helpful to know what the 11:00 to 7, or how that 11 to 7 timeframe is playing out currently.
Okay, I can--
So let us know.
I can tell you, yeah, but most of the noise, most of the complaints come from some of the warehousing, truck warehousing that we have in the township, moving cargo back and forth around and things like that, trucks. Most of the complaints come from, occasionally we get complaints about music, but not very often. Did you want to meet with staff to go over some of these things?
Oh, no, I'm just saying, I liked President Black's suggestion, just so that we can get input from staff in terms of your suggestions.
And I'm not opposed to any commissioners joining in with staff. I don't feel the need to go through it. I have an understanding of what the noise ordinance is, enough to be able to look at any suggestions and know whether or not, you know, we should make any changes. And also, I'll remind everybody that we asked the solicitor at the last meeting whether or not there'd be any significant costs attached to making a change. And I think your answer was no because it would just be minimal, like we wouldn't need a hearing and things like that, just advertising.
It's just your advertising against regular legislation.
So I think we all agree that we should do something with the extra tools, even if they're small, that the state has given us, but that we would maybe look at it in the broader scope of the noise ordinance. We take staff recommendation is what I'm suggesting at this point as our starting point.
I think where we get most of our concerns is in the earlier evening, but we can't go earlier than 10:00 PM. Is that right, Steve?
Right. The fireworks are, as the manager said, 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM. So you're not getting much, you know, even change from your current 11 to 7, which I don't know how effective it's been because I'm sure the public safety people would comment and have that, you know, to get the complaint and, you know, determine where it's coming from and get there, you know, the folks have dissipated, the display is already over. So you're still going to have those kind of problems.
And the other concern is that the fireworks are being set off too close to flammable property, habitable structures and so forth.
And that didn't, and that still was in the 2017 statute, so that didn't change either.
But that's 150 feet, right?
Right, yes, it is. I mean, there would be, I mean, the only thing that can be regulated, you may have certain neighborhoods where there's no place that's permitted. So, you know, you could perhaps do something and acknowledge that in the ordinance.
And then the other issue was even if we change the times on the hot holidays for fireworks, none of it will apply because they explicitly in the logs, the new amendment excluded all the holidays generally where people will buy absorbent amounts of fireworks and put them off. So for me, it seems like if we make a change, it's so, the tool is so that we can advertise that and try to deter as many people as possible on our website and other ways of communication in the township, advertising our noise ordinance that being this time, and maybe people just won't, maybe they'll want to follow that. Captain Crone's like, maybe they'll follow it. So commissioners, does anybody have any other view as to how we should approach this at this point? And I'm thinking maybe we just, rather than give staff just a couple of weeks, we say maybe by, you know, by the first meeting in January, have something for us to look at, or sooner is fine, too. Just give staff time to go through some things. Okay. Well, Tom, how about we just, at this point, just say, yeah, let me just work on it between now and the end of the year, and then maybe beginning of January, revisit it with some staff ideas.
Okay.
Is that cool?
Yep, that's fine.
Is everybody good with that?
Okay, second item I have on the agenda is we received a letter from Lisburn Community Fire Company regarding the construction of a pole building. They requested a waiver of permit fees for the construction of that building. And Fire Chief Josh Keller's here tonight, in case you have any questions for him.
And commissioners, we received a pretty good narrative on this as well.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, waiver for permit fees for Lisburn Community Fire Company's construction of a pole building.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy, a second from Vice President Black. Any questions, discussion or comments?
Question from staff.
Staff.
Just a technicality, but perhaps also waive the application fee. That's $50.
Okay. Okay, we withdraw your--
I withdraw my motion.
I will amend my motion that we waive both permit fee and application fee for Lisburn Community Fire Company's construction of a pole building.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy and a second from Vice President Black. Any questions, comments, or any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for zero. Okay, before we go into Commissioner Reports, commissioners, we're going to adjourn to executive session, and the topic will be the--
Cost of--
Cost of living adjustments for the employees for the 2023 budget.
There's no action because it wasn't on the-- No, there's no--
There's no, it's just a discussion. And we'll adjourn to executive session.
Mean recess? No.
Okay. We would adjourn to, yeah, but we want, there's no need to take any action when we come out.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll start Commissioner Reports with Director Davis.
Thank you, I have nothing tonight.
Mr. AV.
Pardon the interruption, last motion, I'm a detail geek, and you were technically waiving all the fees, so. One item, as your representative to the Yellow Breaches Watershed Association, annual gathering Thursday, November 3rd at Lower Allen Community Park Barn, 6:30 as usual. As usual, we have a brief annual membership meeting, be followed by several short programs instead of one long program. Tentatively, we have Cumberland County Conservation District reporting on some of their projects, Cumberland Valley Trout Unlimited, and a monitoring group. We have, it's a bad night for the
I have the Stormwater Authority.
That has a stormwater meeting, so we might maybe get a report.
Yep, I might. If our newly hired coordinator is available, I might see if they can attend the meeting in my absence, because I will be at the Stormwater Authority that evening.
So lighter, light meal, refreshments, and some environmental outreach. Thank you.
That's always a good event. Enjoyed that in the past. Director Grove?
Nothing further tonight, thanks.
Ms. Greenwald?
No.
Tom?
I'm here.
Director Trump?
Nothing tonight?
Nothing.
Steve?
Okay.
Commissioner Karen?
I just want to wish everyone a fun and safe trick-or-treat night this Thursday from 6 to 8. Hope everyone has a good time.
Super. Vice President Black?
And I have nothing.
Commissioner Nagy?
I just want to thank Directors Davis, Hall, and Grove, as well as Manager Vernow, for my barrage of financial emails this weekend and this morning with questions. Thank you guys all for humoring me. But that's it, Mr. President.
All right. Any of our captains this evening have anything? Nothing. Josh?
Since I get to speak, we'd like
You have to just say who you are.
I'm Josh Keller. I'm actually a director of the fire company. I'm no longer fire chief. Gave that up a long time ago, but appreciate the thought. First off, I thank all the commissioners and the township staff that helped out with the festival, and because it's really our biggest fundraiser, it helps offset our operating costs. That's why part of this project that we asked for, some of the fee waivers, is to help store all the goods that we have to put on that event. And it really will make it safer for our volunteers to be able to store that equipment versus the current trailer. And so we really appreciate the township support, both, obviously, as the budget was taken care of tonight, which really helps our organization, and the other side of things that, you know, isn't necessarily seen by the public as easily. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
I would just like to thank staff and everyone for the good meeting and for all the hard work on the budget. I know that that process sometimes can get difficult trying to figure out how to squeeze things in and all of that, but I think we've really got through a good budget cycle so far, and I look forward to seeing where we wind up. And that's the only question I have, Director Grove, is when do you think we'll see the, like, a final projection for 2023?
You mean the revenue side?
Well, just the whole budget.
Oh, the whole budget.
When will we have an opportunity to see it in its entirety?
I would say soon, very soon.
Okay.
We discussed this today, and we actually think that we can probably have it to the board for the 14th to put on the table if there's no other changes. There are a couple of numbers that Rick's still waiting for, like workers' comp rates, but they won't materially affect the budget that much. So it's possible that we could have it on for the 14th. If not, it'll be the 28th of November.
Good. Thank you. And that's all I have this evening, everyone, and we're going to adjourn to executive session to discuss the cost of living increases for 2023.
We still have a meeting.
This meeting is adjourned.